Good afternoon, the Program and Policy Committee meeting scheduled for 4:00 PM is is taking place right now at 4:05 PM. This meeting is called to order. We will do the roll call. Jackie Devan Ramos, Chair, present. Henrique Carranza, Co-Chair, absent. Karina Elizondo, absent. Cynthia Maris, absent. For the record, the Chair will continue to conduct the meeting for the Program and Policy Committee meeting scheduled for today, Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 4:00 PM, and we will review the following items on the agenda. Item number three, the Tasby Board Policy Update 43, Review Updated Legal Policies and Act on Local Policies. Dr. David Arizola?
So, we're going to again, the Tasby updates the policies every six months now. So this is the latest update. Has eight local policies that we need to take action on. Most of the policies that were updated are minor, more reorganizations than deletions and additions, but we'll go through some of these changes really quick. So CIA Local is on equipments and supply management, specifically this policy that changes that it adds a section to the policy that outlines what a records management person should do on camps, right? What exactly do they have to keep on record? Where do they keep the records? So all of these things we have to outline and what's going to, you know, we're working on a standard administrative procedures. All of those things are going to be in there soon. The policy itself just describes what needs to be in that in that policy. CJ Local, most of the revisions there were actually talk about a safety when it comes to a student travel. Specifically, when I review that policy, it has it outlines what the bus driver should do, that it should count the number of seats, the number of seat bills, how many people are in there, make sure that all of that lines. And so fairly simple, obvious policy. Some of these, when you read them, it seems like we should have had them already. DGC Local, all that does is remove some of the policy on employee solicitation. So that section is not being removed from the policy line, it's just removed from one policy to a different policy. Same thing with the HAE Local, all previous content from the HEB has been moved into this policy. And then the employee solicitation policy was moved to another section. So it's a lot of the updates in the Update 43 are like that, they're moving things around. Nothing major to add or delete in any of these policies. DAC Local, same thing, all previous content from this policy was moved to the HEB. All related to employee solicitations, in other words, what employees are trying, are saying things, or fundraising. Maybe not necessarily for the benefit of the cause, that's what the policy states, right? So it has an outline list of things that employees are allowed to do when soliciting and what they're not allowed to do. The two instructional policies, ECC and EDA, both of these policies are related to, you know, what to do in the course of a disaster in the term, in the case of ECC. Those are lessons learned from COVID, we're allowed to have students drop a course in case of a disaster. Like if we have to go back to remote. For EDA Local, most of those revisions, even though they're new to the policy, they're things that we've already been doing before, like making sure that we use textbook information thirty days before the start of semester. We do our textbooks. I think in March or April, we've already submitted our texts. So most of the changes that we're already abiding by, by a lot of them, so. Update 43 is a light one, I know we've had updates where that are doozies and we can spend hours on it, but these changes here are minor and not much to do.
Anything else? Are we welcome Dr. Minita Ramírez as the beginning of her tenure? And so, any questions, any concerns, Dr. Ramírez? And also, after you proceed, I'll ask Dr. De Nina if there's any input that needs to be provided also as well. But if you have any questions or concerns, I know we submit this to the board and the board reviews it. If this, the committee was complete, we would review the items and then ask them if they were okay with them. In this case, it's really not a non-negotiable. So most of the items are updates and as your previous experience also deals with other school boards as well. So you'll see that some of these are just non-negotiable and we just adopt them as they come in, sorry.
No, no, I have no comments. I think that as we move forward and we continue to get these, we'll continue to bring them through and try to keep our own manuals as up to date as possible and assure that all of the board members have their updates readily available as well. So that everybody's aware and everybody's in compliance. One of the things we're we're looking at possibly doing in line with this is creating our standard procedures internally that will give guidance to employees about so for each one of these policies, that there is a standard procedure that we're going to follow in-house or rules that we go by so that we're assuring that everyone is in compliance with the rulings or with the policies and procedures set aside. Not by Tasby and certainly adopted by our Board of Trustees. And so we want to ensure that everybody's aware of the how-tos and that will be in our procedures. And Dr. Arizola is going to lead that charge with his team. And so as we start to create those procedures, we'll have our legal department review them and then they won't need your approval. Those will be approved internally by the Vice Presidents because it will be a procedure based on the policy that you all have set for us. So just so that you're aware, we're starting to work on that already.
And I do want to add for the record that we had, the board had approved a policy manual for the board members. And so we will continue to work on it. I know COVID hit and then it just stopped everything, but that has already been approved in prior years. So we want to work together with Dr. Arizola and Dr. De Nina to compile it together.
A Procedures Manual for the Board.
For the Board. Yeah, so when we get new board members or the board members themselves, when they forget some of the items, they can refer to that booklet.
It's imperative that we have them.
Yes, thank you. Dr. De Nina?
So, yes, I agree with everything everybody has said. I know I'm in the process of also finalizing the faculty procedure manual that hopefully by the end of this, soon in July, there was a lot of updates that needed to be done. So that's what I'm working on with various people. And just to piggyback on the handbook, the draft is there. What I would recommend is either the retreat or just devoting time because it does take time to review or maybe submitting that draft early on so people can read it before and then try to make some adjustments. But a draft is there.
Yes.
But I also want to remind the team that TAC is supposed to create a new member for Board of Trustees. It should be launched this month. So I know that Dr. Ramírez will be going to their meeting in two weeks, I believe, or sometime in July. So that might be something that you may want to ask Dr. Ramírez.
Yeah, the new member training?
Yes, for board members. Because that would be essential.
And that's from TAC, right?
Right, but they said only for incoming board members, not existing. But that will help, at least to make sure that we comply with all the trainings and especially the cybersecurity trainings that we have to do on a yearly basis.
Yeah, okay. So we'll attend to those as they come along and then we'll make sure that we work on that man. Thank you, Dr. Arizola.
And part of what I'll be doing with that man is coming up with a standardized look for it so that we're, whether you're looking at the board policy manual or the faculty procedures manual, at least the look is the same. The content will change depending on what the procedure allows.
Correct. And maybe it might have to be a semi-live document, right? So because there's a lot of changes taking place and so we update as it goes along.
And that's the advantage to having a Procedures Manual that you don't have to run through the board every time you make a change. Where, you know, like today, one of the updates in Tasby of Big 43 was very simply to change the pronouns. As we're going through the policy manual, we want to remove pronouns from any of the, any of those references in the policy. And that's one of the changes that's on here.
And that's just simple changes that are being asked of us to do. Okay, sounds good. Look forward to continuing to work with you. Yes, thank you so much. Item number four, approve modification to the Laredo College Board Policy, BBG Local. Board Members' Compensation and Expenses. That is one of my submissions that I have asked to submit for consideration. If you take a look at the handout where it says expense reimbursement at the present time, and I'll call on Mr. Vela also as well for any input. What I felt that, one of the items that I felt that I think needed to be addressed was the fact that we address the policies of what conventions or conferences the board was supposed to go. So if there was another convention or conference that the board member was considering attending, then they had to come to the board. But before that, if they wanted to attend any of these conferences that were approved by the board, then they would just come and let us know and advise us and then speak to the President also as well to find out. So what I was bringing to the table this time around is a consideration of how we get the monies to be able to go. In case someone doesn't know, but for the record, the board members are not paid a salary. They are done, they do this, you know, out of their own, I guess, kindness. And we do, we are elected officials, but we were, I was finding out because mostly it's me that goes out of town a lot was that a lot of the times I had to foot the bill completely for my trip and then get reimbursed afterwards. And so for some of us, it is difficult. And so I decided to bring this to the table to see if my fellow board members would consider. And the expense reimbursement is as follows. Board members shall be reimbursed for reasonable expenses incurred in carrying out board business at the board's request and for reasonable expenses incurred while attending meetings and conventions as official representatives of the board. Reimbursements shall be authorized by the board chair and in consultation with the chancellor. I think that's really important to.
Who's the chancellor?
Well, in this case, it would be the president. So we would have to make sure that we change those awarding. These are just a proposal.
And my name is Dr. Ramírez. My name is De Nina for the record. This is what Austin Community College has. So we would obviously change chancellor to president. And then we highlighted that things that seem a little questionable, but what happens at Austin Community College is that they provide board members two options. So if you see, one was the reimbursement of the car and other expenses by reimbursing them after the expenses. And then there's a set advance in the reasonable. In other words, giving them a pre-advanced check before, like what Ms. Ramos is talking about.
Now, I did want to say there is another, the highlighted area. If I, if I can go on to the next one, an amount for board member travel expenditure reimbursement shall be approved in the budget each year, which we already do. But the following item says reimbursement shall be in accordance with an accountable plan as defined by the Internal Revenue Service and made by one of the following methods as determined by the board. So this is where I ask Mr. Vela. Does that mean that we supply our social security number and at the end we might get a 1099?
No, Ms. Ramos, says available finance for the record. No, you would not be taxed on those reimbursements. It's a reimbursement of expenses.
Okay.
What the accountable plan means is that you have to account for all the expenses. In other words, you need to submit receipts for that. But yes, you would not receive a 1099 or in this case, be taxed on that.
Be taxed on that. Okay. So then that was the question and that's why it was highlighted, right? And so the two items that were set or are for consideration are number one, reimbursement for use of a personal car at the mileage rate currently approved by the board or the actual cost of commercial transportation plus parking and taxing fares and expenses for lodging meals and other incidental expenses. Board members shall file a statement and to the extent feasible, attach receipts documenting actual expenses for which reimbursement is requested. This is already in place, okay? So we're going to put a check mark on that one because that's already there that we are utilizing. Number two is a set amount approved in advance for reasonable expenditures to be incurred on a particular trip. This amount shall include travel, lodging, meals, and any other reasonably predictable expenditures. Board members shall file a statement with receipts accounting for amounts actually expended and any excess shall be refunded to the college for district. So number two is the one that's actually being brought to the table. As we speak, in the past, at the very beginning, when the previous president was here, we used to be able to get number two automatically. It was not on the policy. Then some changes took place and we were sent back and every, each board member who attended a conference needed to pay upfront of the hotel, the airfare, and not the conference. So the conference was paid for by the college. What was, had to be paid for was the hotel and in the airfare. So the travel was already paid for by, let's say, myself. So I had, I had a I had a situation where I took, I was going to take a trip and I had a family member who passed away. So I had to make the arrangements to cancel all of my items on my own and they got reimbursed back for the conference that I did not go. So that was about three years ago, Elizabeth, right, Morris? And so on the part of mine, the organization, I had to take care of all of those items, the airfare, the travel and so forth. While the previous years, everything was taken care of by, by, you know, administration and by the office, right? So number two is kind of like, let's consider this, let's think about it. Let's talk about it and find out if this is something that can work for the board so that everything is already taken care of, the airfare and the hotel. And we just show up like when we go travel for school, right? They give us a check, we pay for the items. Anything else separate is on our tab, right?
So any, but all meals would still, and receipts would still be turned in? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so in other words, they go ahead and set up everything. They pay for everything. And so what happens is that I have to take care of my receipt, just like the process is done at school. When I travel for school, I'm not a, I'm not a board member there, I'm an employee, but I have to bring back and I have to reconcile at the end when I come back.
Correct. So we need that, I mean, this for the record. So the, in our case, Ms. Volcanegra would make arrangements for your, your travel and for attending the conference and pay for that out of the office ahead of time.
Right.
And then provide you with a check for the meals to be incurred throughout, throughout the trip. Upon your return, you would then submit the receipts. Now, if receipts are lost or unavailable for whatever reason, and you can't make those up, I would hope that everybody would understand that if we don't have a receipt, we can't account for it. And then that money would have to be reimbursed to the college. Is that correct?
Yes. And as I know now, I've been to several places where they send my receipt straight to my email. I've been to several places where they send my receipt straight to my email. So that would save the person, you know, as far as, you know, the, the, the trip itself. The airfare, if it needs to be airfare, would be arranged by, by here. And it serves a purpose for that because when you, when the board member does their own reservations. They give them a certain price. When you reserve through the school, it's, it's, uh, what is it called? A tax deductible or a tax exempt? So we, we, we can't have it both ways. The board member doesn't, can't utilize a tax exempt. If we're not, you know, if, if we're, we're reserving it on our own, under our own name. So the other way it's under Laredo College and for the, the trustee or whoever's gonna be visiting. So, um, any questions, any concerns, any suggestions, Dr. Thehina?
Uh, Dr. Thehina for the record, I think this just gives options to the board member whether they want to get reimbursed after the trip. Or get a pre-advanced and, as I mentioned to Ms. Ramos, maybe the only thing, once the board handbook gets finalized is. What happens in. In case a board member doesn't reconcile, you know, then what are the?
The board member would have to then re-return, repay. The money that was unexpired.
Right, exactly.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't want to elaborate here because this is the policy, but certainly in the procedure manual, that could be more written out.
And I, and I do want to, uh, share recognizes, Mr. Muir.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was, I think the thoughts still being discussed. After that, I did have a comment about. Board policy BBH, which also addresses this subject matter. But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Yeah, well, so there was some discussion about. Whether monies, expenses would be advanced. And if I heard correctly, I thought that yes, there would be some monies advanced to the board member ahead of time to cover some expenses. That would be incurred. Okay, so board policy BBH local. That talks about, there's a couple of things in there, but one of them is it talks about expenses that are incurred to attend events. And there's a section labeled prepaid expenses which says. All meals, lodging, and transportation expenses will be considered prepaid by the board member. And will be reimbursed in accordance with college district travel procedures upon submission of receipts. Within fourteen days of returning from a conference, so. In my interpretation of that is that, is it the. Those expenses are funded by the board members, so it's out of pocket from the board and then they come back and then seek a reimbursement, so. If you're going to modify that, you'd have to change board policy.
Right.
Be. And the other thing I noticed as I was looking at BBH local. Is that it does say that board members may attend the following. Conventions and there's a laundry list of conventions with board notifications, so. There, there's a list of five items there. And BBG local does say, we just have to keep in, in the background.
Keep them both together.
Yeah, read them both together, so to the extent that. Permission is required by the board for a board member to. Attend a conference, it looks to me like there's a carve-out in BBH.
So I would say that if that's the case, I would set aside this one for another time for the next meeting in July. Try to put them in together so that the changes could be made accordingly. I did want to make reference to a trustee talk article and just a couple of items that we talked about. But, you know, they, they do talk about the board needing to determine what is best for the respective colleges and establish transparent and fair reimbursement policies. The policy should explain the approval process for reimbursement. Definitions of gratuitities, allowable percentages to tip, and necessary documentation. And reimbursement documentation usually includes the destination, the dates, and the purpose of travel with written receipts. Any questions that are likely to arise in regard to the reimbursement should be proactively addressed in a travel and meeting guidance manual. Travel and meetings guidance manual, we've copies provided to every member of the board. As well as the professional board staff and the college president. This manual should address the exceptions that may occur to the general reimbursement policies established by the board. Some of the examples that they included are, what happens when a trustee is unable to attend an event because of reasons beyond his or her control? Who is responsible for the expenses incurred? So that would be a question that we would answer in that, probably in that policy that we could form. How should expenses be handled when a trustee travels with a spouse or other family members? Do individual trustees have the independent authority to set up meetings with local and state stakeholders? And request reimbursement for travel and meals for themselves and others? We've answered that question already because we don't have that authority to do that. And the board should establish ceilings for maximum levels of travel reimbursement. For example, mileage expenses for the use of personal vehicles should be charged at the rate set by the college, the state, or the federal government. And we've been doing that already because I believe that's in place, right? And, and not to exceed the cost of economy airfare to the same destination. Some of the other things that we've already considered, but the need to be placed in the policy is. The board should also detail in its policies what travel and meeting expenses will not be reimbursed by the college. The following travel expenses are generally considered ineligible for reimbursement. Such as housing or travel costs incurred from extending to travel for sightseeing or other personal reasons. Alcoholic beverages, entertainment expenses, and any expenses incurred by a trustee's spouse, significant other, or other family members. And so I think taking those items into consideration is really important, but yes, I do agree with Mr. Muir. Putting both of the policies together, that's what we're here for. We're working it together, we're making sure we're, we don't. Forget something before we add something else, so I have no problem with that. We can go ahead and, and postpone it till the next one and if anything, I will defer tomorrow. So that I can explain to the board that we are considering putting two, two policies together, okay? Got, Mr. Muir?
Madam Chair, the other thing I'd point out, just kind of for discussion to see how, how you'd like to handle it, but. The, the addition of that last sentence in the first paragraph of BBG indicates that the board chair. And the chair alone would have the authority to authorize reimbursements, but at some point perhaps before then. There would have to be a reimbursement decision made by the board under this last section of the same policy, so. I'm not sure, you know, maybe that. That's something that the board does just one time and says, okay, we're going to have reimbursements for these expenses under number one. That's moving forward in the future. Or, if, if, maybe if there has to be a determination of either choosing one or two. Before the board chair can, can authorize a reimbursement, then you would have to. Get, bring it to the board and then take it to the board chair. I mean, those are just thoughts, you know, I think you're looking through some of that and maybe. Comparing it to, to what we have in BBH or local would be something.
And I did want to add to, to your comments that. This section, the reimbursement shall be authorized by the board chair and in consultation with the college president. We need to look at that because in the BBH, it says that any item. If a trip is not on the approved list, then the board member comes and advises the, the board. So the board is actually approving the notification. And/or the submission of other conferences. So in essence, the first step is already taken care of and so the reimbursements. Shall be authorized by the board chair and in consultation with the college president. That would have been something that would have taken place prior to the adoption of that policy that we did last time. So, uh, and, and in essence, I believe that it was stated that way, the, the, the policy was stated that way. But it wasn't done that way, so we ended, the board ended up having to approve a reimbursement when it wasn't even a policy. So I would say we leave it out because the board is actually the one that's approving. The other board members' submissions, so. Uh, maybe that might be taken, taken off from the BBG. Because in the BBH, it, it states that they're coming to the board for the notification. And also for any other conferences that are not on the list, so.
Me, that I mean this for the record. Mr. Muir, so then. Could we then state that based on guidance on BBH in BBG, right? We could say based on guidance in BBH, the following reimbursements would be allowable expenses?
You could, absolutely.
And so we reference BBH in BBG?
You sure could.
Yes.
And, and I, I think is, is everyone has suggested here, is taking BBH and BBG side by side and reconciling. And just make sure that, that we don't find a conflict there because there, that, that's, you know, that's one of the things that, that we've seen. And, and lawyers in, in comparing policies or statutes or what have you, is there going to be some conflict that'll give rise to a problem?
And one could cancel the other out.
That's right. And then you have, that's exactly. Which one takes precedence over and then there's confusion. That's right.
Yeah, okay, so we're, we're set with that one.
We're gonna table.
We're gonna table it, we're to the next meeting. And also take into consideration the BBH local. Uh, and, and then, and removing some of the items that we've talked about. And then making sure that the rest of the items don't cancel out some of the other points in the other policy. So we're okay with that? Yeah, okay, good, you see? Okay, so me, myself, and I will have this discussion. But I'm hoping that the rest of the board.
I'll be happy to listen.
So we move on to number five, approved modification to Laredo College Board Policy. BDB local board meetings, public participation, Laredo College Board of Trustees. Uh, we bring this item to the board. I, I want to say something about this. Policy. Some of the things that I think we're concerned with is malware. That can infect our, our systems. And, and I feel very strong about public comment. I feel that that's the opportunity that we get feedback from the public to provide us with any. Perspectives that we need to consider. But bringing in items such as, you know, USB laptops, pen drives and so forth. You're actually bringing whatever you have there. And it could be, it could be a malware, it could be something else that could happen to it. And so for those security concerns, for the technology concerns. Uh, we have decided to bring this item for consideration for the board. And so we are considering on BDB local, adding the following information. After public comment shall occur at the beginning of the meeting, which we are not removing that and we are also continuing with the three minutes. Attending shall not be permitted to use during any meeting. The USBs, the laptops, the pen drives, the flash drives, or other outside devices. To connect to the district's audio/video media system due to, among other factors, cybersecurity concerns and/or. Any audio or video devices. None of the foregoing devices may be used by any audience participant during any part of any meeting. Any individual who wishes to distribute printed material to the board members during a board meeting shall. At or prior to the signing up with a presiding officer or designate. For participation during public comments, submit the printed handout materials to the administrative secretary to the board. Distribution of any materials during any part of the meeting is strictly prohibited. That's another item that we considered bringing to the table. Uh, we felt very strong about that because, as you all know, any item that we bring to the table. We give to our secretary to the board. Uh, and we provide the information prior to the meeting so that they can be already in place. So definitely, I think it's something to consider. I'd like to bring it up to the board. And see if the board is, would consider adding these items under BDB local. Any comments or any input from the rest of the administrative staff and we'll begin with Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos, and I, I too strongly. Feel, I feel very strongly about this getting through. I think it is imperative for the security of our technology. And also to allow for the three minutes to be used by our. Our people who want to give commentary. Uh, in, in sharing their ideas and views so that we may be responsive to their, their needs when possible. So thank you very much for, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Dr. Thehina?
Dr. Thehina for the record, I could, I mean, to add, I also strongly believe in public participation. But when caught with USB or any type of device, it may pose now with all the cybersecurity issues that we have. So I agree with you that I think this is a good way to prevent that, that could be detrimental to the institution.
To, and to the system as well. Dr. Arizona, any input you'd like to provide regarding this policy?
I already agree that we need something like this, even. For doing business with certain vendors or, or anything like that, we need to make sure that they have. That their cybersecurity stays, so we shouldn't expect any different.
Definitely, okay. So, Mr. Muir?
Just a, a comment on this, it's. This language I think would not restrict somebody from sending, say. Electronic PowerPoint presentation. File that perhaps could be received by the board secretary and then. Pulled up on the computer here and if, if that had, if that would pose a cybersecurity concern. Or any of the concerns that are addressed, other concerns addressed by this policy, we could add that in here. So I'm trying to think if, if you had a PDF or a PowerPoint or something, there was some malware embedded in there somehow. I, I'm not a computer technologically oriented person, but if that could happen, then that might be something to address as well.
Well, that is also something that we need to consider as well. I think we might need to add. The integrity of the public comment is what we want to keep.
Yeah.
The three minutes is what we want to make sure that they utilize completely. In previous public comments that we've had, we do notice that people write out their public comments. Uh, at one point during COVID, they were submitting the public comments, whatever they were going to say. And they were providing them just in case they couldn't show up. So I would like to retain the integrity and one of those ways that we could do that is. If we do keep them. I, I'd say you have to also provide that list that says. No, no presentations to be done during the public comment section, so. If it says attending shall not be permitted to use during any meeting. Well, they're telling them USBs, laptops, pen drives, flash drives, or other outside devices to connect, so. If we're keeping the integrity of public comment to make a public comment, right? Then we also need to add there, no presentations are permitted during public comments.
You could.
You know.
It's up to.
So, Dr. Ramirez, Dr. Thehina, or Dr. Arizona, whoever wants to provide any input. Because then you're, you're open to receiving the presentation through email. Which is sent to Ms. Bocanegra and she in turn will have to upload it. And so once that's uploaded, the three minutes would be over really because the timer starts now. You can input there, the use of presentations will, will not be allowed. Uh, but again, going back to legal, we've got to take that into consideration and remember. The whole point of the policy is to retain the integrity of the public comments. You don't not want to minimize the, the public comment. You want to continue to have people come in and come in and, and make their comments. In public to us of any topic or any detail that needs to be done. And so. If, if the point is we cannot allow to have a presentation during the public comment. Then that's another item that needs to be considered.
And you would have to have that applied to everyone because if you don't, you might. Trample on a constitutional right that would be viewpoint discrimination, just possibly what you should do. So just blanket across the board, just, this is written to apply to all members of the public.
Any?
Me, that I mean this, President, for the record. Mr. Muir, are you recommending that we add it or are you saying for us that we should consider doing it? It, it's not required for us to allow for. PowerPoint presentations or present, or. Videos or whatever, if they're sent, so you're suggesting consideration that if they're sent ahead of time. To the board secretary's computer, that then we're able to screen it and determine whether or not we can show it?
Well, man, man, just, I'm not, I'm not legal either, but what I'm. Well, man, man, just I'm not I'm not legal either, but what I'm what I'm saying is or what I'm trying to convey is that if you're receiving the email, she's gonna have to open up that email.
Right, and we don't know where it's.
And we don't know where.
That was my that was where I was going with that. That's my concern now.
You don't know words.
We're running that risk every day anyway, right? Because we do get external emails, but would your are you recommending that we add something like that or are you just saying maybe in the future, we 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 could consider it and see how this goes?
I would say if the college has a system in place that could scan the email and essentially determine that it's free of malware and doesn't pose any security or cybersecurity risk, then I think it wouldn't need to be added here to protect the college from cybersecurity threats. Uh if that's not possible, then I think it's worth considering adding here.
So, Madam Chair, could we could we take this this as is now to the board tomorrow and then let us work on that? And and should we be able to provide that service, then then we'll come back to you for an update?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, because remember, the the last comment or the last um submission for consideration, any individual who wishes to distribute printed material to the board members during a board meeting shall, at or prior to signing, turn it into to the board secretary, right? Distribution of any materials during any part of the meeting is strictly prohibited. So they in essence can still do a presentation if you turn in the paperwork.
Right.
So so there.
So we're still giving them the opportunity. They wanna print their own PowerPoint presentation and bring copies for everyone. That's not a problem.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Chair recognizes Dr. De Hidena.
Dr. De Hidena, for the record, maybe for the sake, because now that I work very closely with Liz, maybe putting a timeline also on that because if they submit this paperwork or printed material a minute before, it's not gonna give her time, but I know uh for public um comments, it says fifteen minutes.
Right.
So I don't know, we need to elaborate also in that paragraph that that's applicable to the public comments um. And also that gives us time to work with legal in case there's something that is questionable that being sent.
So where it says any individual who wishes to distribute printed materials to the board members during a board meeting shall.
Mm-hmm.
Submit, shall submit. Instead of at or prior, shall submit.
Uh.
Printed documents?
Submit what, I'm sorry?
Printed documents?
Printed documents.
Fifteen minutes prior? For the start of the meeting?
Fifteen minutes prior to signing up with the president's reciting officer or designate for participation during public comment.
The way we did the other one.
Submit, submit the printed handout materials to the administrative secretary to the board. Also, do you say you wanna say fifteen minutes there or or where do you wanna put you wanna keep it at the very beginning? Submit printed documents fifteen minutes.
Prior.
Prior. To signing up, right?
Well, I mean, it's fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting, right? So they could be signing up and and submitting their documentation at the same time.
And is that enough time, Ms. Pocanera, to?
Yeah, they would have to bring their copies.
Yeah. No, we're having, no, no, so they would have to come with their copy. So submit printed document and with an S, documents, right?
Parenthesis.
Uh fifteen minutes prior to signing up with the presiding officer or designate for participation during public comment.
Yes.
Submit the printed handout materials to the administrative secretary to the board. Distribution of any materials during any part of the meeting is strictly prohibited. Okay, so when they sign up, they give those to to Ms. Pocanera as well, right? And so she in turn will come and drop them off on the seats and then but it but it says there fifteen minutes prior. So anyone who's gonna make public comment and already knows they're coming based on the agenda that's been posted, which is seventy-two hours before the meeting, right? So they have all that time to prepare their documentation and bring it. So printed documents fifteen minutes prior. Is that okay? Everybody in agreement? Yes. So those are the items that we will consider. So what we'll do for the record is we will provide uh our board members with BDB uh local and uh provide this uh items to be inserted for consideration and then we will come back and address any technological uh points that need to be uh addressed. I would like to have uh Mr. Chavis uh look it over and see if there's any uh perspectives that he can give us that maybe maybe there's something that's already being done to scan the emails, as I know that there a lot of our stuff goes to spam that's not recognizable. So maybe that's something to take into consideration also as well. Okay? Questions, concerns? Okay, we're we're good with number five? Okay. Uh number six, approved modifications to Laredo College Board Policy DJ Local Assignment workload and schedules, Dr. Maricela Rodriguez De Hidena?
Maricela De Hidena, Provost Vice President of Academic Affairs, for the record. Um this one is pertaining to DJ local and there's a there's a practice that has been in place um forever and ever uh in regards to how department chair stipends are um are factored. And for whatever reason, it was only factored in in the fall. And just to bring it into perspective, stipends are given by the amount of full-time and part-time faculty that each department chair has. What happens now over time is that um because of the fall semester, due to some dual programs, like for example, in the fall, there's no math, but in the spring, there's a lot of math. So what was happening is that particular department chair was missing out of her stipends uh because we're not factoring it out in the fall and in the spring. So uh what this is gonna do is now look at the stipends beginning of the fall and spring semesters of each of the calendar years and um we had customally already added dual adjunct, but we had not modified the policies. So what we're adding here is that um we would have the number of adjuncts, dual adjuncts and full-time faculty to be part of the calculations. And uh the calculations are factored in in the handbook. So um I believe they would get, I'll have the handbook with me, David, a a hundred uh for full-time and then uh, that's right, two hundred for full-time and a hundred for part-time. So what's happening is now fall is gonna be about a hundred dollars for the full-time and a hundred in the spring, so that way it equates to the two hundred dollars that they were already getting. But the the dual at any adjuncts, it's gonna be a hundred dollars per semester. Um again, because the practice has been that the department chair evaluates every adjunct every semester. So um, I don't think anything was changed on this section, but um here we just added again the dual adjunct faculty because they do evaluate uh dual um adjuncts. And again, the pay stipend will be calculated in the fall and spring semesters throughout the academic year. And this includes adjunct and dual uh faculty or dual adjuncts. A faculty member instead of instructor because now with the ranks, there's professor, so we just use in the policies, we've we've gone into just using faculty member. Um and then uh course load reductions in stipends should be calculated on an annual basis, the provost, um this still had vice president of instruction, so we're changing it to now um what the title is. And I'm not sure what the instructional council used to be, maybe in the nineties. But uh what we're doing is just putting the instructional dean and faculty procedure manual committee because we do have a committee set of faculty members that um review the manual. And again, just changing the verbiage of the the VP title and the deans. And the other thing we're not going to do is that the stipends used to be part of the contract, so we're removing that part for the department chairs. And so that way, because if we now calculate the spring, well, the contract needs to be signed in early uh August or or September, so you know, we we're just removing that stipend completely from the contract.
For the record, Minita Ramirez, President, the but the stipends will still be part of their their taxable income?
Yes, yes. Except it's not part of the. In the contract, it's, well, again, I go back to my experience, right? In our contracts, even if we had stipends during the year, they're not placed there. Right, so it's just my base salary, that's what I that's what is given to me. Uh but with taxing or financial or anything else, whatever I get in between, because I could get jobs in between, you know, like uh additional monies, then that is not shown in my paperwork, which is actually my contract of uh, what do they call it? It's uh it's what they tell me every year that I'm making, you know, and then why approve or not approve, based on my years of experience and so forth. And so they they put that all together for me, so.
Right, and and like what you're saying, it shouldn't be on the contract because then they think it's a binding and the stipend can really fluctuate depending on the number of faculty or adjuncts they have. So it shouldn't be tied to the base salary contract.
How does that affect their TRS? It doesn't? It doesn't one way or I mean?
The only way that it will dramatically uh change or impact a stipend is if we merge and eliminate one department chair from that where they're no longer getting any stipends for that, but that rarely happens. I mean, they may see a fifty-dollar, a hundred-dollar difference depending on, you know, faculty because sometimes when they retire or resign, there may be a possibility that we don't replace that faculty member due to the enrollment of that particular department.
And then the other thing is when they look at your top three years of the highest earning salaries, that they take into consideration what your base salary is, like how much are they paying you? So if one year you did an exorbitant amount of extra duties, they're not considered for the retirement part. So I could work uh many more hours afterwards, summers and stuff like that, but none of that is binding towards me because it's not in the document that's what I'm getting paid for. So it really it really it helps out the institution, but it also helps out the individual that in the event that the individual does not go above and beyond, in this case, it's the workloads, it's the different classes and so forth. So if they choose not to do any of those dual jobs or anything like that, then it's not part of their requirement uh in their contract, but they can certainly do so. Okay, so I I think it's it's a it's a good thing and especially the taking into consideration the items uh of um of having the the information be put, you know, into policy. I think that's really important because we were missing, they were missing out on something right now.
Oh, yeah, definitely, especially those that had a a bigger influx in the spring. Unfortunately, we couldn't pay them for the amount because of the of the policy.
Okay, so we'll take that into consideration and bring it to the board. Okay, yes, questions? No, none? Okay, do you stay up for the next one?
No, I think.
Oh, okay, okay, no, no problem. So the next item, thank you, Dr. De Hidena. The next item is going to be approved modifications to Laredo College Board Policy DJ Local Assignment Work, I'm sorry. Wrong one. Number seven, I'm sorry, approved modification to Laredo College Board Policy FLB Local Student Rights and Responsibilities, Student Conduct, Dr. Fred Solis and uh Doc uh Ms. Peña is here on his behalf?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Peña, Associate Dean of Students, Title Nine Coordinator, on here on behalf of Dr. Fred Solis. And so he um is bringing to the board policy FLB. And basically, what we are just asking the board is to approve the edits of the policy um at as it has specific titles. And so we're asking if you approve our edits to substitute for general descriptions of the uh responsible personnel instead of the specific uh titles. And as you can see, there is a total of five pages and pretty much um I believe the changes started around page five through through eight.
Yes. And all of this is changing designated administrator of the college district.
Correct.
Or um designated vice president. Um. Designated administrator or the designated vice president.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, I I do.
Yes.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, Minita Ramirez, for the record. It says no students, the very first thing right there on section suspended student restriction. No student who has been suspended from the college district for disciplinary reasons shall be permitted on the campus of the college district during the period of the suspension without prior written approval of the designated administrator of the college district. Do we have a template or a format in the procedures manual of how students are supposed to do that?
Are supposed to do it.
Well, how do they know? How do they know who to contact? So is it is it written in the student handbook so that they know who they're supposed to contact? My worry is that if a student is suspended and needs to come on campus for a hearing or whatever, if if we're only saying the designated administrator, how is the student supposed to know who to contact?
So when a student is in that predicament that uh he or she is suspended, there is a disciplinary memorandum that is uh uh shared with the student and the student is uh signs it and either I or whoever uh suspends the student reviews it. In that particular disciplinary memorandum, there is a section that allows the student to know where to go, who to visit, if he or she needs to come back on campus, so that that is there. And in that memo, we also provide any other um information depending on the situation of the case, but typically it is written at the very bottom of this uh disciplinary memorandum.
So these are the kinds of things that we want those standard procedures for so that everybody is aware if if for whatever reason, on any given day, she's absent or Dr. Solis is absent or who knows what procedures need to be followed? And so it is for these very kinds of things.
So would we would we be in order to add to this to leave to this particular section uh a uh a section that says refer to?
The student handbook?
Or refer to the communication from the designated administrator? I don't know, I mean, c- cuz look, the the booklet, if I'm a student and I have been suspended, I'm not gonna go looking for a booklet. I'm gonna be waiting or probably not be waiting because the first thing that I'm gonna be waiting for is communication from the designated party who is going to be addressing my issue, right? And if I'm gonna, who am I gonna call? The first thing that I wanna do is I wanna find out who I'm going to call.
Right, so in the sanction, so excuse me, uh so uh so in the sanction letter, that's what you're talking about, right? In the sanction letter, it will say who their person of contact will be?
Who and where, what, phone numbers, all that good.
So then I would say to add at the very bottom, refer to.
Your sanction letter.
Okay. Yeah, so that way they know, oh, I'm gonna get this letter and this letter is gonna give me.
Well, and that's what we wanna put in this in the procedures, in that standard procedures instead of in board policy.
Right.
Because that's really more of a procedure than a than a policy.
So instead of a letter, can we say refer to communication? Uh, Mr. Mayor, you had something to say?
Well, uh all I was going to comment on is, and I think that's a very good question that Dr. Ramirez brought up, which is if a student reads this, they're not going to be able to identify any section who the designated administrator is or who the designated vice president is. Now, that may or may not matter, I don't know, but that is a fact. And. And then the other comment I was going to make is that if this, because I know the student handbook has parts of the Board Policy in there. And if this, any of this language, I have not checked this, is in the student handbook, you'd have to revise that as well.
So my, my twenty-one years of experience, the students will not go to the Board Policy. They're gonna go to the student handbook. And that's why I just wanted to make sure it was in the handbook.
This policy is in the student handbook.
So, but, but you have the procedures of the stu-, or the student and your sanction letter will have the procedures. So I don't think we need to put it in here. I just want to make sure we have it in the student handbook.
Yes, so can we say refer to the student handbook?
Yeah.
Let's say I'm one of those individuals that goes into the, to the policy, which I probably would, but goes into the policy and reads all of this stuff and where am I supposed to, what am I supposed to call? And then I'm still waiting for the letter, right? The letter hasn't arrived yet. So I'm already getting ahead of the game. I'm already trying to make sure that I find out what are my rights, what are my responsibilities for me to come back, right? And I know we've had a situation like that before. Basically, we had a student that had to come to Zoom to present himself to, to the Board, right? So if the student is unaware, well, they're gonna show up. And so, and, and let's say it's, it's a time limit, right? Let's say you receive the paperwork and then you send out the form. It, it could be a matter of minutes or it could be a matter of hours or days. But for, for that person who's been suspended, it's gonna be like a, none of this amount of time, right? And so all they want to know is to find out the answers right then and there. So could we maybe consider putting refer to student handbook? Or I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate here. I'm trying to figure out both sides.
At any time a student is uh suspended, either I or whoever does uh makes the decision to suspend the student will always have a meeting with the student. The student will never be suspended without a go-by, right? During that meeting is where all this communication takes place. When I do student disciplinary uh meetings, I will review this policy with the student. And I tell the student, although we're reviewing it, that does, that does not make whatever the allegation is okay if you have not read it. Because as a student, it is your responsibility to be comfortable with our policies, rules and regulations. So I review it with them so that we, at that point, if they have questions, they can ask me. I don't go line by line, but I pretty much summarize the eight pages with them. There's also from, um, let me tell you. From this section right here, the use of electronic devices all the way up to here, right before the suspended student uh restrictions, that is also placed in the student uh syllabus. They, all the students have that particular section. My name is also added there in the, in the syllabus. So at any given time, although uh a name is not provided here, just uh the uh, a um responsible personnel title is provided in the syllabus itself. My name is there together with my email and my office location and my phone number. So at any point in time, that information is also available to them so they can know who to reach, who to contact. When a student is um kind of, you know, kind of like almost maybe violating the code, typically the instructor will also advise them. And they also refer uh at my name to whatever message they're sharing. Depending on the situation, the student will reach out to me and tell me, hey, I'm having this discussion with my instructor. He's telling me X, Y, and Z. And so at that point, I say, okay, well, I haven't received anything from your instructor. Uh, but in, in case I do receive something, we will have a meeting and we will discuss the situation and so on and so forth. So it just depends on the situation and it depends on the student and how proactive the student is. Sometimes they do wait for me to, my office to uh set up the appointment or they will reach out uh to me. And then, you know, depending, at the end of the day, then I'll get the email from the instructor, depending on the situation.
So what we're saying is that it, the, the changes in the name titles is just to put designated administrator of the college district. But when it comes to the student handbook, which is, this is incorporated into the student handbook. The proper notification of individuals responsible for having communication with them is listed there.
I can write it right after this section. Yeah, I, I can incorporate that in, in the student handbook.
And verbal communication is that i- if you further on into the, the, the policy, there's it talks about the, the student being someone to meet with someone and uh for a possible numerous times, right? To, to go through the case and make sure that within ten days, there's resolution and whatever. So, so the policy is written fine. I just want to make sure that we're
We're addressing those.
Because the student handbook is where they're gonna go. And so as long as we've got that in there, we, we should be fine.
Okay, and we might just come back later on?
Yeah.
Once um, once we feel it necessary. And we might have to change it back to put the title of the administrator that we, that, that, that the administration is considering. Because right now we were putting a designated administrator of the college district removing whatever has already been placed there. But we can always come back and you can always change it and say, you know what, I have a designated individual. This is the name, this is the title.
Right.
Okay?
And typically, sometimes I do tell the student that anyway in the meeting because for that same reason, if they do want to appeal a decision, um, if whoever's next on, you know, the line is not available, I usually always add that little, either the vice president or whoever, you know, he assigns to look at your case or the president or whoever the president assigns to look at your case um will then sit down and, you know, you'll have a meeting with them and so on and so forth. So I do kind of make those uh I do advise some of that possible change or note because it's not exactly how it is in the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Any other comments? So if I may briefly just uh review, uh, we are presenting to the Board item number three. Uh, item number four will be uh provided to the Board, but will be deferred till um July or to the July meeting. Uh, we will review some of the items and make sure that it uh coincides with BBH and BBG Local. Uh, number five will be provided to the Board. Number six will be provided to the Board as well. And number seven, the changing of the names or the designated persons. Any questions, any comments? Okay, so it is uh five, no, it's not five. Oh, yeah, it is five twelve. And this meeting is adjourned for the Program and Policy Committee meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance and we look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow.